Good morning, everyone. Be calling this regular meeting for May 12th, 2022 to order. If you could please join me for the salute, uh, pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the state symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Mr. Villa, do we have our attorney on the phone?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, my attorney.
Thank you. So moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be the approval of the regular meeting agenda. So I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, make a motion that we approve the regular agenda and that in our resolution, item Q, which is going to be the consideration of resolution number 22-19, a resolution declaring the vacation and abandonment of a portion of Bald No Road, that that be tabled on our agenda. And basically, and I can go ahead and discuss that a little bit during our discussion. So do I have a?
Second to motion.
So I have a, I made the motion, Commissioner Brown, second to motion, discussion. So I think just, we need to discuss this a little bit more. Our attorney has talked to us a little bit and, and sent us some information on it. So I think we need to wait for further direction from our attorney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item is public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available at the county manager's office. As indicated in our legal notice, participants must be seated in the meeting room or if participating through Zoom, they are required to register no later than one hour prior to the meeting using the provided link. My understanding is we have no public input on Zoom. Do we have any one in the audience for public speaking? Yes, why don't you come up, please?
Good morning. This gentleman told me, that gentleman right there told me how to use this. I've already forgotten. Thank you for being here.
Can you state your name again, sir?
Yes, my name is Bernard Dunlap. I live at 108 Chalco Pyrite in Tyrone. As an aside, I'd just like to say that yesterday I believe I became an official citizen of New Mexico because I received my new, New Mexico license plate for my automobile. I received my new, New Mexico driver's license, and I am now a registered voter. I'm here this morning because I have a complaint. I have no cell phone service in Tyrone. I came to the building yesterday and a gentleman next door around the corner suggested I come and visit you ladies and gentlemen this morning, and that's why I'm here. I have lack of cell phone service and I have talked with others in the community at the post box that I frequent every day, and they have similar concerns, either really poor service or no service. And I've talked with more than two. As an elder, that's not as intuitive with technology. These are my concerns, and I have about six that I quickly jotted down, and please bear with me. Doctor appointments and reminders now require cell phone reception to receive notices and so on and so forth. Number two, when I visited the motor vehicle division, I was required to have reception from my cell to receive reminder of my appointment. Even had to have a cell phone out front so I can walk through the front door. Number three, I had to rely upon my son, who's a resident here in Silver City, more than once because of those circumstances. Therefore, I'm not as independent. I've been retired for over 10 years. I've stood before bodies such as yours. I duly appreciate what you do. I'm a retired architect. I gave up my license about four weeks ago because it was due to lapse anyway on my birthday coming up in a few months. I seldom even receive text messages because I only have one bar reception. And six, and most important, the sixth item, all of these issues are safety concerns. And I've been involved in fire and life safety for most of my life, standing before a body such as yours. And I know how difficult it is as a receptor of someone who's standing before you, but I wish that you would have the wherewithal to direct my concern to possibly those in, or who travel to Albuquerque and have the wherewithal to have further and possibly more reason to help citizens such as myself with this kind of a problem. I thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Salver. I live just on the north end of town. I'm here to speak regarding the, the danger of catastrophic fire to our community here, which is, as you must understand at this point, a very real concern. We're not, uh, not in the same place we were years ago with an increasing drought. And, uh, in my 43 years, I suppose there've probably been a few times where the wind has been so long for such an extended period. But if we were to have had a fire at the beginning of this, these winds just create a danger that a, any fire would, would be very severe. I've experienced that when I was, well, yeah, I had a letter to the editor. I mentioned that I started a fire when I was hiking in the high country somewhere and it was totally quiet out. And suddenly out of nowhere, the wind came up and I was just terrified. And I managed to get it out, not without a huge adrenaline rush. So my concern is, is the fire safety of our region here. And I'm just hoping that we can be proactive to prevent catastrophic fire like that's happening up north. Things to consider are insurance rates, which have already gone up to our houses regarding this. Possible clearing of vegetation of, uh, in regions around here to around our homes and things. I've done that myself. My neighbors, I wish could have done more. I've done a little bit more on one of the neighbor's property with his permission. Smoke is a toxic hazard for people with respiratory issues. There'd be a huge loss to businesses and schools. And, uh, I was a member of the, or I was employed by the county and city with the Office of Sustainability for a while. And I do remember that Nick Sicillo helped formulate a plan for emergencies such as fire. I just hope that we visit that and ensure that we have plans for where everybody is going to go if, if there was a large fire here. Where would we house everybody? And, uh, I think that's enough. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public input? Come on up, please.
This makes me so nervous. I'm, I'm Maureen Laney and a little shorter than the others. I'm, my name's Maureen Laney, and I'm currently the magistrate court judge here in Silver City. I've been the magistrate judge for 12 years, and it's very rare that I make it to commissioners' meetings at nine o'clock in the morning. So I was very happy that the stars aligned and some cases got canceled so that I could come today. I don't know if this is the appropriate time for me to address this, but in the event it doesn't come up again for public input, I just wanted to offer my support for the consideration of the proclamation for Mental Health Month that's going to be addressed a little later on in the agenda. I wanted to show appreciation for you all drawing attention to the issue of mental health. Because, and you'll have to forgive me because this one makes me emotional. I'll get it together in a minute, guys. Mental health issues are way too often dealt with in the criminal justice system, and it is not the place where they belong. And I've seen it for many years. I've seen it, witnessed it personally with individuals who suffer from mental health illnesses that go untreated. Many times their family members and loved ones desperately seek out care and adequate treatment, and they are unable to find that help. And what tends to happen sometimes is that it then leads to criminal behavior. And we see these individuals come into the criminal justice system and cycle in and out of jail without really receiving any meaningful treatment or help. It doesn't help the members of the community, and it certainly doesn't help the individual suffering with the illness. I'm very, very happy to have been involved with the program called Stepping Up that our county supports, where we have worked hard to get a number of different organizations within our county together to coordinate efforts and see what we can do to close loopholes and to make access to care and meaningful treatment available to those that need it. And we have strong participa-, strong participation from the sheriff's department, the hospital, all of the different treatment providers in our area. Gosh, I know I'm going to miss some people, and I'm sorry. The district attorney's office participates. The SPIN program, which has been phenomenal in helping to close some of the loopholes that we have in our community. So I know I've missed others, but bottom line is, people are starting to become aware that we really need to do something to assist those with loved ones that have mental health issues and those that are suffering alone with mental health issues. It's important to all of us because left untreated, it affects all of us and manifests itself through criminal activity or even just public disturbances. And so many times, people can be treated so effectively for mental health issues and, and receiving that adequate treatment, go right on out and become very productive members of our society, and we want to see more of that. So, thank you for drawing attention to this, placing an emphasis on it. Again, this county has been very proactive in trying to find new steps and new ways to help people, and I'm happy to see that you're continuing on with that endeavor, and I look forward to continuing on with that as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Judge.
I guess I'll be next. Christina Wolford with SPIN, and it makes me nervous too, just me. I just also wanted to show up in support of your mental health proclamation that you're going to address later in the, in the meeting. We're on the front lines of the mental health battle out there, trying to help people who be willing to become stable and, and do something different with their lives. Any support that we get from our local governments is phenomenal. It's, it's critical in the role that we play with helping people stabilize. The sheriff's office and the city police, all working together to, um, make mental health less of a criminal justice issue. But it will also take the support of all of you here today. And I just wanted to speak out in support of what you're doing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input? It's good. I'm glad we had public input. Bore out my phone, it's not used to timing that, so appreciate it. It, it makes me feel good when we have people coming up and, you know, addressing public with the public input, so thank you. Seeing no one else, we can move on next to proclamations. Under proclamations, A, consideration of the 72nd anniversary Empire Zink Mind Strike plaque dedication proclamation. So I'm going to go ahead and read it here. It's Grant County proclamation, whereas Empire Zink strike started October 17th, 1950, due to issues caused by a history of discrimination against Chicano workers, and whereas picket lines were main, were maintained until June 1951, when a local judge prohibited the men from picketing, and whereas many feared the strike, many feared the strike over, and whereas women took to the picket lines the next day. And whereas 150 women, children, picketers were incarcerated on June 16th, 1951. And whereas still, the resolve of the women picketers could not be broken by violence or court maneuvering, and whereas the company opted to settle the strike in 1952. Whereas a plaque honoring this historic struggle and celebrating success of the women who participated in picketing and related acts will be dedicated in Hanover, Hanover, New Mexico on May 14th, 2022. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Grant County Board of Commissioners that all women who participated in supporting the Empire Zink strike be acknowledged and remembered for their acts of courage, heroism, and sacrifice. And it will be witnessed hereon to set our hands and seal of the county of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this 12th day of May, 2022. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a second by Commissioner Salas. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we have a proclamation. Who is, who do we have to have this proclamation presented to? Ms. Baca, Ms. Vasquez? Do you have the original?
So, that was, that was tight. Or, you have to stand in front of us, and then you're in the picture.
Well, with great honor, we present this proclamation, you know, for, on behalf of the county, to all members of the Empire Zink strike in that era. So I have.
Just going to hold it up, and somebody can grab it.
We want to, we want to thank the Grant County Commission and contact and their staff. They have really, really supported this project. They have, it's going to be on Saturday, and we will have the dedication at three o'clock. That's where we're doing the dedication. Now, if you don't want to drive out there, you don't know how to get there. We will be meeting at the Bayard Community Center around nine o'clock in the morning. We have two buses that, from Cuarecaminos, who will be driving people down there. There's 13 seats available on each bus. And so they'll take you out there. You can go out there, enjoy the dedication part of it, and they'll bring you back. And then at 11 o'clock, we will have a celebration. We will be serving hamburgers, hot dogs. We have a present, a PowerPoint presentation with just pictures of that era of the strike. We also have a storyteller, a gentleman who has lived in this area for a very long time, who wants to tell his stories from that era also. And then we'll have music out there, and we just want you to come out and have a good time and, and enjoy our, our program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, it's going to be consideration of National School Lunch Hero Day proclamation. Commissioner Edwards, it's all yours.
Thanks, everyone, and thanks for being here today. I just want to say before I start reading the proclamation that I'm sorry we're late, but it doesn't, the fact that we're doing it after the fact doesn't lessen the importance of this proclamation and recognition by any means. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas school lunch is the most important and nutrient-rich meal of the day for many children, and whereas the staff of the Cobra Consolidated School District Nutrition Department is committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the staff of the Silver Consolidated School District Nutrition Department is committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the staff of charter and private schools are committed to providing healthful and nutritious meals to their students, and whereas the women and men who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interactions and support, and whereas our Grant County nutrition professionals have a lot on their plate between preparing healthy food, adhering to strict nutrition standards, navigating student food allergies, and offering service with a smile. And whereas our Grant County nutrition professionals must balance many roles and follow numerous federal, state, and local regulations to ensure safe and healthy meals are available in schools, and whereas School Lunch Hero Day provides the opportunity for the whole community to thank these hardworking heroes. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners does hereby complain, proclaim, May 6th, 2022, as School Lunch Hero Day, and express our deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commend their good work on behalf of children and urge our citizens to do the same. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and the seal of Grant County to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this 12th day of May, 2022. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'm a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proclamation approved.
And we have some guests to accept it.
Good.
Before we do the picture thing, any of you like to say anything to the world? The world of Grant County?
Just want to thank you for the proclamation. I know that our food service personnel, they're vital to the daily operations of our schools, not only during the school year, but throughout the summer as they do continue to feed our students throughout the summer. So thank you so much.
You know, I'd just like to make a comment really quick that one of the things I think is really incredible about the folks that do school lunches is that every one of those folks in the school cafeterias knows the names of every single child in our schools. And it just, it makes the day of a child to be greeted in the lunch line by name. And it just, you know, it's, it's an incredible bright spot in every child's day. Can't say enough about the work that you guys do for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Moving on to next item is consideration of Mental Health Month proclamation. Commissioner Edwards.
I'd just like to say before I start, thank you so much to Judge Laney and to Christina Wolford for getting up and saying something. That's awesome. Thank you. And thanks to everyone who's here on behalf of this proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's health and well-being, and addressing mental health symptoms early is critically important for overall health, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, our state, and our county, and about half of all Americans will meet the criteria for a diagnosable mental health condition sometime in their life with symptoms starting by age 24 for the majority of people. And whereas many factors are in play when it comes to mental health conditions, from social determinants of health to genetics, but there are protective measures that can prevent mental health conditionings from developing or keep symptoms from becoming severe. And whereas social, cultural, and historical factors often impact the mental health of the residents of communities that have been traditionally marginalized, which leads to a mental health burden that is deeper than that other communities may face. And whereas the average delay between symptom onset and treatment is 11 years, meaning a lot of people spend months or years facing mental health challenges before getting a diagnosis. Intervening effectively during early stages can save lives and is critically important for people living with mental health conditions. And whereas there is a strong body of research that- conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas when facing a mental health concern or living with a mental health condition, it's common to feel like no one understands what you're going through. Know this, you are not alone. Help is available and recovery is possible. And whereas we are deeply grateful to those in our communities that provide mental health services, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May, twenty twenty-two as Mental Health Month, and we call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Grant County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need to fully fund appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands on the seal of County of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proclamation declaring May Mental Health Month.
I'll second that motion. Do we have any discussion? I just, you know, this is very important issue, and it does affect a lot of people. And, you know, there's a lot of good writing in this proclamation, but the one that really stands out to me here is, and we call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Grant County to recommit to our community. Those are very important words because when it comes to mental health, we cannot do it alone. We have to have everyone's help. There's a lot of families that are affected by it and 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 people by it. So, you know, that to me is one of the strongest statements that this proclamation can make is we all need to get together, put our heads together, and see how we can help these individuals. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So will anyone who's here on behalf of the Mental Health Month proclamation join us?
Thank you. I appreciate it so much.
So we will send a copy of the proclamation to all the providers that were here, to all the folks that were here today. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item of our agenda is consideration of Nurses' Recognition Month proclamation. Commissioner Edwards?
So in fine Grant County fashion, we decided that a day or a week wasn't enough. And so we decided to declare the whole month of May Nurses' Recognition. So whereas no clinic, healthcare provider, or hospital in Grant County would be able to provide exceptional healthcare to our communities without our nurses, and whereas it takes a very special person to do all that nurses are asked to do and do it with the care and compassion that nurses provide to patients each and every day, and whereas our nurses have given all that we have asked of them and much, much more during the very challenging days, weeks, and months of the pandemic, often at the cost of their own physical, mental, and emotional health and the health and well-being of their families, and whereas we recognize that when no one else could be there with our loved ones during the pandemic, nurses were there, and whereas nursing is both a calling that is deeply personal and a profession that is often often under-recognized and under-appreciated until one actually needs their services. And now, therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May, twenty twenty-two as Grant County Nurses' Recognition Month, encompassing both National Nurses' Day on May sixth and National Nurses' Week from May sixth to twelfth, thus expanding our heartfelt recognition for our local nurses to the entire month of May. We call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Grant County to take the time to express your sincere gratitude to nurses, not just during the month of May, but each and every time you have contact with a nurse or someone who aspires to be a nurse or is studying to be a nurse. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands on the seal of County of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept this proclamation to declare May, Grant County Nurses' Recognition Month.
Seconded that motion.
Commissioner, have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Discussion. All I want to say to the nurses and and everything, thank you for everything you do. You guys have a tough job, especially with the way things have been in the last two, two and a half years. I really appreciate what you do for everybody. And it doesn't go unnoticed from us commissioners and and our governing board for Healer Regional. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, Kelly's here.
Florence Knight and Gail's birthday. As you all know, she is the founder of modern nursing. Without all of her endeavors, it would not set the path for us to be able to care for patients in the way that we had to during this very tough years proceeding today, and of course, what comes as we move through a nursing shortage. I also want to say that I'm very honored to accept this on behalf of nurses in our community, and those are nurses from the nurses that take care of our children in our schools, all the way to the nurses who hold the hands of those who are dying in hospice. It was it is a calling. It is a very personal thing, and we enjoy holding the hands of your loved ones and comforting each and every patient and their family as we care for them. And I really do appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Good? All right, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be the Healer Regional Medical Center report from our interim CEO, Tony Thompson, and CFO, Paul Rogers.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a bit of an update. Let me start by saying the hospital is on track with our plan. And as we finish up our fiscal year, Paul will give you more details. I'd also like to give you an update on our transition from with our cancer center from the University of New Mexico to the New Mexico Oncology-Hematology Consultants. Everything is moving along, and we hope that that will continue as such. Our planned transition date is is August thirty-one, and it looks like everything's moving in that direction. I'd also like to invite you to an event. We were contacted by the the United States Department of Agriculture. As you know, we are recipients of funds through USDA, and they would like to visit us on May nineteenth at two P M. And we'll convene under the the canopy at the front of the hospital for a recognition that they would like to facilitate. And then finally, I want to give you an update. I know everyone is eager to to see changes as we move from the the pandemic stage of this virus to the endemic stage, and we're making some modifications to our visitation policy. So beginning this coming Monday at eight A M., we'll modify our visitation. Our visitation hours will begin to be eight A M. to eight P M. You'll no longer be required to enter through the emergency department, so we'll remove those signs that are at the front of the hospital and and visitors can enter there. We will continue to limit visitation to those eighteen years of age and older. We'll continue to limit inpatient visitors to two per patient, and outpatient and pre-op visitation will resume with one person. We were not allowing that before. So these are some moves toward a normality, and we'll continue to do what we can and what we're allowed to do as we move forward. With that, I'll turn it over to Paul for our CFO report. Or do you have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions?
No.
No. Thank you. Thank you.
So, good morning. So I see my report on the TV screens. I don't see it here. So if you'll bear with me a moment. Go ahead. I'm trying to get. Ah, yes, okay. I'm not seeing a cursor. Okay. There you go. Thank you. Perfect. Sorry for that delay. So the hospital is reporting earnings for the month of March of five point three seven seven million dollars profit. Included in that number are what we call normalizers, and there's two of them that hit this month. Three point nine million dollars was received some twelve to eighteen months ago, and that money was provided to the hospital so that it could continue to provide the good care that it does provide in light of declining patient volumes and added costs that we incurred in order to care for patients and respond to this COVID epidemic. So I would caution you to look at the five point three seven seven million dollars as something that's going to continue. And keep in mind that that three point nine million dollars was given to us to reimburse us for lost revenues and expenses that we incurred. So keep that in mind when you look at that number. The other item that's a normalizer this month is the receipt of disproportionate share funds, which are something that we only receive from time to time and account for on a cash basis. So five point one million dollars was were the normalizers, and our total net surplus excluding normalizers was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which is considerably more normal than what we're used to seeing. Here's your volume trends. We did have a very good month with our patient volumes. Discharges were up. Outpatient visits were up. Surgeries declined due to some physician vacations, and E R visits spiked upwards as well. Here's a financial statement which shows our total operating revenues in excess of budget in prior year, operating expenses also in excess of budget in prior year, and that is largely a function of pay increases and volumes being on the up and up. Again, total net surplus was five point three seven seven million dollars. On a year-to-date basis, the hospital is reporting a total net surplus of seven point three eight three million dollars on a budget of one point one five eight. Key measures of liquidity, these are all important. Net A R days declined again, meaning we're collecting our cash faster. We're turning receivables into cash quicker, presently at thirty-one point nine days. Days cash on hand improved by about three days, three point three days. Our ability to fund our short-term liability, our current liabilities improved, and our average payment period, this is how long it takes us to pay a vendor, continues to decline. So our cash position continues to improve. I want to go back one slide, and I'm not certain how to do that, so I'll just tell you. The capital, the capital acquisitions this year exceed one million dollars, and the capital acquisition that we we saw in March was a brand-new ambulance, and that was about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This is a budget calendar. It's I apologize. It's hard for you to see. We I will be presenting a near-final budget at to the governing board at the May twenty-sixth meeting, and we will have a budget to present to the to the state of New Mexico on July twenty-nine. And if there are no questions, I'll step down. Otherwise, go ahead.
Do we have any questions?
No.
No?
I do have some comments in general about the hospital.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, so I I just I don't know who to thank, so I'll just thank you guys as representatives of the hospital. Had a procedure there yesterday and had a nurse and two. I don't want to I don't want to call them technicians because they may be more than that. But the experience that I had was just absolutely great there. And of course, they didn't know me from anybody and that's the way it should be. And the previous experience I had there was great also. And I'm, I'm hearing from a lot of constituents about good experiences they're having at, at Gila Regional. They were really swamped yesterday, but taking care of business in a really expeditious manner. When I walked in there, I, I just couldn't believe the amount of people that were running through there getting, getting tests and, and stuff. So, I, I just want to say thank you, appreciate the work. And I, I wish there, I wish we had a better way to continually thank the staff from the people who checked me in at the front door right on through the process for the work because the hospital hasn't always run that way. I've been here a long time, so I probably have fifty years of experience that I can remember at the hospital and it always hasn't been pleasant. It, it just couldn't have been better the last two times we were there. I wish there was a way you could pass that on to, to staff, so that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Moving on to the next item of, of the agenda is going to be a presentation by our Grant County Sheriff Frank Gomez.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I'd like to just go over a summary report before I give some of my stats. In regards to training, advanced training continues with pre-approved venues as we shut down any new requests pending the end of the fiscal year. Upcoming trainings plan will include continuation of basic and advanced C I T topics, internet crimes against children, training for two detectives to attend, federal-state certification to pursue these matters with assistance from the New Mexico State Attorney General's Office and the FBI, certified voice stress and analyst training for one detective, advanced FEMA courses for Lieutenant Burns in areas of emergency operations and disaster preparedness. In court security, our newly hired court security officer is on the job in training with Court Security Officer Travis Clonan. We are experiencing an inquiry, increasing volume in courthouse activity as the state resumes business as usual. Cases of interest, we have responded to multiple unattended deaths in the Chita area. At least one is to be believed a suicide. The others are pending further investigations, but will likely be deemed natural or non-criminal. In regards to COVID currently, the sheriff's office is COVID-free with no employees out. Operations Stonegarden field activities have resumed under the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Operations Order Lieutenant Burns is currently working on a budget adjustment for F Y twenty-twenty oper- Operations Order to extend all remaining funds. He has secured an extension through December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two to effect the remaining vehicle equipment purchases as we still are experiencing significant difficulty, delays in procuring police vehicles. Lieutenant Burns, Lieutenant Maldonado, and Deputy Palacio attended training meetings with C B P, Demin, and Lorchburg sectors stations for the upcoming F Y twenty-two operations year. More to report on this coming month. State Homeland Security Grants. Lieutenant Burns has assumed oversight for this program until an emergency manager is hired. We are currently expanding funds already approved for various items, including equipment, one patrol vehicle, and purchasing some handheld radios. Our trauma packs arrived and I'll read a little bit more on that here in a bit. On April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, G C S O participated in the National Drug Take Back Day at three locations in Hip, in Cliff, Mimbres, and Walgreens in Silver City. We were joined by other community health representatives at the Walgreens location. Sheriff's Office was able to provide assistance with the tour of the Gila, the races areas within the county that we provided services and saw the event completed successfully with no major injuries or incidents reported. In regards to our motor vehicle fleet, we continue to suffer the effects of the supply chain failure, particularly the microchip shortage. We have funds to purchase vehicles, however, the vehicles are not available in short term. We have ordered a Ford Expedition S S V and expect to order two more soon. These being the only purpose-built police vehicles suitable for our service requirements. Ford notified the fleet dealer we are utilizing that these vehicles are scheduled for production in April with delivery in June. In regards to the trauma packs I was talking about, the sheriff's office received forty-three fully-loaded trauma packs for our deputies. These contain various medical, general, first aid supplies, and professional-grade tourniquets. Oftentimes, law enforcement officers arrive unseen first. We will now be able to provide enhanced treatment to the limits of training and law for injured persons. I would like to thank Hiloay Medina for his commitment for, to further train our deputies in the use of these trauma packs. They should be deployed at the end of the month. In regards to their graduations, that Cliff schools were held on May eleventh with Mr. Barry Agnew's fifth-grade class. The students were treated to a pizza party and Darren the Lion made an appearance too. Graduations were held for G W Stout, Cavalry Chapel, Harrison Smith last week. Top their graduates were named Alexis Gonzalez from Harrison Smith and Joseph Iiegas from Cliff. Congratulations to these young fine folks. U S Forest Service Contract Patrol, we have resumed our patrol work in the Gila National Forest under the Forest Service Contract Agreement. In regards to our communications or radio system upgrades, work continues on the state-funded systems upgrades to our very adequate and inadequate radio system. The new Jacks Peak repeater was switched on last week and is undergoing use testing. Both the Copper Summit and Juan Mesa sites should be operational soon. We are pursuing more collaboration with the Forest Service under an M O U. that is already in place as the utilization of certain system components of theirs will be essential in the overall plan for a greater inner operability. I am in the process with H R. of interviewing up to four deputy candidates. All are currently attending Western New Mexico University Police Academy with expected graduations on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. I hope to hire one or two of them. Remodeling of the sheriff's office is processing and nearly completed. We are anticipating using our new internal access public entrance and lobbying through the main building entrance and hallway soon. This will greatly ease the public's asset, access to our office and provide a much safer layout for them and our staff. In regards to our C I T., Dr. Troy Rogers from the Public Safety Psychology Group has been visiting us and making himself available to our staff collectively and individually. This is a tremendous resource to have him here at our office to interact with our deputies and allow them, allow them to the opportunity to speak with him. As we continue moving with our C I T. and our C I T., I mean, it's been an awesome resource for our deputies and dealing with behavior health issues or any type of crisis that we have on the streets. The one of the things that I do want to emphasize is Dr. Rogers is not taking any resources, any assets from our local providers. He is a twenty-four-seven that if we need on graveyards, but more than that, he, the referrals are being sent locally to our providers in, in Grant County. The sheriff's office will institute, will institute patrol districts starting on May fifteen, twenty-twenty-two. We will formalize four patrol districts in Grant County and will be able to enhance patrol presence and reduce call response times, especially in the outlying areas of the county. I will have a more specific presentation on this in the coming months. We are able to effect this due to being nearly fully-staffed in patrol and having enhanced radio communications countywide. We have worked toward this goal for a considerable time period and there was multiple concerns which we had, have made steady progress in addressing to make it possible. And before I close, I'd like to recognize a valued member of our, our team who has served it, the public and communities in the southwest New Mexico for more than three decades. Detective Sergeant Raymond Tawiso announced his retirement last week. On May twenty-seven, twenty-two, he will close a career which has spanned more than thirty years. Ray has been instrumental in my administration's success and has dedicated a wealth of knowledge and training for criminal investigations and training. He is also our lead firearms instructor in the pursuit of his duties. I salute him. My hopes and prayers for a long and fruitful retirement are with him. Ray's legacy will live on in the many fine law enforcement officers he's worked with and trained for over years. Thank you. That concludes my report on some of the stats that I'd like to give. I did give each commission, the commission and the inter-manager some of our stats. For the month of April, total calls of service, dispatch calls were five hundred and fifteen, self-initiated were six hundred and forty-four. Total calls of service for the month of April were one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine calls of service. On our narcotics stats, fentanyl for the month of April, approximately three hundred and ten pills were seized, three point three grams of methamphetamine, and six strips of Suboxone. On the civil for the month of April, twelve, the order of protections were served were twelve, notices were fifty-six, subpoenas one hundred and fifty-nine, summon sixty-two, writs seven, and miles outside of Grant County to D O C. or to a rehab center, six thousand four, four hundred and sixty-one miles. And again, I'll just do a comparison from April of this year to April of last year. The domestic disturbances, we had twenty-three versus last year of twenty-two and one. The driving tests continue to stay high and it's been awesome because we get to have that rapport with our students and even older people that haven't had a license for a while, so we continue to do that at no cost. At Dairy Vents, we had twelve versus last year of zero. Narcotic violations, we had five versus last year of two. Disturbances, we had sixteen versus last year of thirteen. Welfare checks, we had forty-nine with three self-initiated versus last year of thirty-eight and three. Animal complaints, we had forty-one and two versus last year of twenty-nine and three. Special details, and this would be Operation Stonegarden, our Martin, mountain runs and any grants that we have, we had fifty for the month of April versus last year of thirty-two. Vehicle accidents with no injuries, we had sixteen versus last year of ten and two. Vehicle accidents with injuries were three versus last year of three. Total crashes that the sheriff's office has investigated since January first was one hundred and fifteen crashes. That concludes my report. I stand for questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be the approval of, uh, the minutes for, under F G H., is going to be approval of minutes for April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two work session meeting, for April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting, and for April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two work session meeting.
Mr. Chairman, with approval of all three sets of minutes.
Second item.
So, a motion by Commissioner Brown and a second by Commissioner Salas. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda is, uh, under Financial Reports, aye. Fiscal Year Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Quarterly Financial Report ending March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the quarterly financial report as presented in the Tuesday work session.
I'll second that.
So, a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item J., consideration of May fifth, twenty-twenty-two expenditure report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the May fifth, twenty-twenty-two expenditure report as presented in the Tuesday work session.
I'll second that.
So, a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Salas. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Before we go into new business, just, uh, in, in, I'm remembering, make sure that the item that we tabled on the agenda go on the next month's agenda. Thank you. Moving on to new business, it's going to be under item K., consideration of delinquent solid waste accounts subject to lien. Now, I know we have one that, that has been taken care of, so it won't be signed. It will be probably approved, but taken out of the pile and, and not signed.
It's actually been two, so at this point now there are sixty-nine liens instead of seventy-one.
See if we can take those out before they get signed.
Yes, yes, we've already, we've already pulled them and, and the ones that you're happy to signature are the, are the sixty-nine.
Okay.
Great. Thanks for doing that. Well, Mr. Chair, with that clarification, I move approval of the remaining liens that have been presented to us by Mr. Martinez.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Brown and a second by Commissioner Billing. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to L., discussion and possible action regarding publication of ordinance of abatement of dangers in abandoned building structures, mobile and manufactured housing, wreckage, and debris. So, let me, let me ask you a question, just so I'm, and I know we went through this a little bit last time, but my understanding, this is just going to allow the action to go into the public hearing, correct? So, for the public's purpose or for public information, this is not set in stone until we have a public hearing, listen to constituents. Once we have listened to the constituents, we can go ahead and make changes if the commission feels, uh, according to whatever's being said in the public meeting, correct? I just wanted to clear that for the public. I don't want no, you guys approved this ordinance. In reality, we haven't approved it. We're just taking steps to approve it later, which can be modified or changed further down the road. Correct? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the discussion of possible action as you read it and with the knowledge that this is not final.
Second item, Mr. Chair.
So, a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Salas. Do we have any discussion?
Does anybody else feel like we're back where we were two years ago?
Yeah, we do.
It's really nice to move forward with this.
And I have to admit that I haven't done the proper homework I need to do in going through. I need to print this off and mark it up and, and really study it out. I, I wonder if any of the commissioners feel like there's appropriate time. We can have discussion, not before it goes out to the public, but so that we'll be ready to decide what. Is, is there a work session or something that we have time to do that?
We have a special meeting a week from today, but I know that we want to have this do it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Then we have the other one on the twenty-fourth.
When we do the public hearing, uh, there will be time for discussion for us, correct?
But you were looking for something outside of that?
Well, maybe not. I don't, I don't know. I just, um, I think ideally, unless we're, unless the commission's fine to move forward with this, I think ideally we, if there's any red flags in there, like I say, I haven't done my homework even now, that's going to just, uh, the public's going to read this and say, what are you guys up to? But having me not doing my homework, I don't even know if there's any red flags in there, so. Maybe we can just wait and hear the public discussion. We can be part of that discussion. I don't know how you want to proceed, Mr. Chair and Commissioner.
Can we put in on the work session prior to the, to the public hearing? Because the public hearing should become on a, on a regular meeting because that's where we take action, correct? So, can we add it back onto the work session to have those discussions go onto our public hearing? Is that going to work or is that still this?
That would be the work session on the twenty-fourth?
No, the work session in, uh, June.
Which would be the twenty-first of June?
No, I'm talking about the first. Well, yeah, it will be.
June's is messed up.
Because we don't have, June's really messed up.
Because, I mean, unless the commission feels that we can do it at the end of the month, but also keep in mind that our budget is going to take quite a, quite a chunk of, of, uh, time.
You know, we can make it the fifth agenda item on the twenty-fourth. I mean, we're kind of paying for the fact that June is messed up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm happy to do that too. I didn't see any red flags myself, but that you'll catch ones I didn't catch, I'm sure.
Well, then maybe, uh, we could just do it with, with Commissioner comments at some point when, after I read the thing.
Yeah, I, I looked at them too and I, I don't have much. I, I think it's a good, I think it's a start and I think we need to do it.
Okay, well then, let's just go forward with it.
So, we're, we're planning on having a, um, a work session on, on twenty-first and then a regular meeting on the twenty-fourth of June, correct?
I'm sorry, when I said twenty-fourth, I meant May twenty-fourth. The June is twenty-first and twenty-third.
So, we're not going to be able to do anything anyway, not even have a public hearing? So, can we just put it on a work session and then put the, the other one on underneath or after the public hearing? Would that work, just in case if something comes up?
So, the work session of June twenty-one is what you meant?
The work session of June twenty-first. Have it on there so we can have a discussion, do anything. Then on the twenty-fourth, I'm assuming we're going to have the public hearing. We can discuss a little more then and then go for the final.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, I'm sorry. Does that work? Does that work?
Sure, oh, absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
So, Madam Deputy Clerk, where am I? Are we on discussion, right? We made a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Moving on to item M, discussion and prob- possible action directing publication of an ordinance of junked and hazardous vehicles.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the resolution uh, directing the publication of an ordinance, uh, and possible action on that ordinance related to junked and hazardous vehicles. And the ordinance number is O twenty-two dash O three. And I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
So, a motion by Commissioner, um, Brown, and a second by Commissioner Salas. Discussion.
So, I was just going to make the comment that this is the same thing.
Please.
Um, we are just, we are still in the discussion phase. So, just wanted to make that clear to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards, I didn't think about that one, but yeah, you're correct, thank you. Do you want to do that the same with this item as the first item, work session, regular meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it'll automatically be on the work session agenda because it'll be on the regular meeting agenda following, right? And we always go over that regular meeting agenda.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is, uh, under N is going to be consideration of asset deletions, transfer request number two.
Mr. Chair, move that we approve asset deletion and transfer request number two.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Salas, I have a second by Commissioner Billings, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, moving on to resolutions, uh, consideration of resolution number twenty-two dash seventeen. This is a resolution concerning development and production of so- of sources of renewable energy in Grant County.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of resolution R twenty-two seventeen.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Billings, do we have any discussion?
You know, I would like to clarify one item based on the, the article that was in the Daily Press, uh, which somehow I was quoted as saying this empowers county staff, uh, to, it, it ended up sounding like it empowered county staff to, to stop or to, to slow down development of these, uh, renewable energy resources, and that was not my intention, I don't know what I said that got quoted that way. I may have misspoken, uh, but what I like about it, I want to emphasize, is that it empowers county staff to assist these developers, uh, while at the same time allowing the county staff to recommend to us measures that might be needed, uh, as this industry develops, uh, to protect the property rights and, and quality of life of the neighbors of these developments. So, that was what I intended to say.
I think that's what you said.
Okay, thank you.
I understood.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Billings.
Yeah, so my, I think the main thing that I can think of right now that needs to be addressed is, um, is the, um, well, just a little story to go along with it. I was fortunate enough to be on the very southernmost tip of the United States, which is the big island of Hawaii a few years ago, and there's a number of wind turbines down there that are just, they haven't worked for years, is my understanding, they're just sitting there and will be sitting there in that beautiful pristine area for, um, what I'm, if, unless I'm mistaken, was told mistakenly for uh, just an unknown amount of time till, I don't know how many years till somebody deals with that.
Till it takes them to disintegrate.
Yeah, and so, um, uh, my biggest concern is, um, is cleanup, which would be, uh, a removal obligation after the productive life of, you know, whatever project, whether it was, uh, solar or wind. And actually, I have some language I'll pass on to, who do I pass that on to, Priscilla? Okay. Uh, that's in a, a proposal for, that may or may not ever happen here in Grant County, the, uh, the potential producer of this, um, this is a solar project was, you know, they just put that s- language in that they're going to clean up their mess forty years from now or whenever it's over, and it's pretty specific language. Um, they're going to remove everything to a depth of thirty-six inches, all pipes, cables, wires, blah, blah, blah. And, uh, then there's a removal bond attached to that, that, that was, uh, you know, something that they standardly do. This is not something we want to put in place that, uh, where Grant County, in my opinion, where Grant County says, you know, we're going, we're going to be stringent enough that wind and solar companies will choose Luna or Hidalgo County to go to. This is just some standard language that should be probably in every agreement to protect and, and maybe there's some state laws, I have no idea, are there, are there state protections?
About reclamation at the end of this? Not that I'm familiar with, but there might. Priscilla, have you seen those in, in, in the rule?
I haven't.
I haven't either.
Well, anyhow, I'll pass that, that's my biggest concerns, concern is the cleanup years later, because there's no use to have a project end forty years from now, and then a hundred years from now, this is still sitting there.
Still sitting there, yeah.
Not that I'll care, but somebody's great-grandkids might, so.
You know, that's a valid point, thanks for bringing that up.
Well, I think there's, you know, there's a potential for all that to pollute the groundwater and all that sort of stuff. Oh, potential for that to pollute groundwater, et cetera, too, so I, I agree with Mr. Billings, I think the removal, um, clause is a good idea.
So, what we do is, uh, we're gonna, we have a motion to approve it, do you guys want to change the motion table it to look at some of this wording and add it?
No, that, that includes that.
I'll just pass this on to county staff, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've asked them to recommend to us appropriate ordinances, rules, regulations, permits and procedures, et cetera, and this could be something like that.
There you go. Got you. Thank you.
And, you know, again, I wouldn't have any objection whatsoever to making whatever comes out of the recommendations from staff apply to all industries, right? I don't think there's any reason we would say we should pick on this industry uh, for those kinds of provisions that protect this, this area.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item R, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-two dash twenty, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit.
I think you skipped P and Q.
No, we.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Q we took care of already.
Never mind, I have a check here on P already. So, let's go back up to P, consideration of resolution number twenty-two dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority. This has to deal with the, uh, PFR department and those Gable substation.
Oh, yes. Mr. Chair, I move approval of resolution R twenty-two eighteen.
I'll second that.
So, a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Edwards, discussion?
Just surprised they didn't jump up and wave their hands when we skipped item P.
Sorry about that.
They weren't following the agenda.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, now, moving on to item R. Consideration of resolution number R twenty-two dash twenty, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept resolution R twenty-two twenty, accepting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Salas, second by Commissioner Billings, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to bids and request for proposals. Item S, consideration of bid number B dash twenty-two dash O seven, deals with bulk diesel fuel.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept bid number B twenty-two dash O seven as presented in the work session on Tuesday.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Brown, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. If I could have a motion to recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Health Care Claims Board.
So, who, so seconded?
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Salas, I have a second by Commissioner Brown, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we are the Health Care Claims Board. Under item T is consideration of April twenty twenty-two indigent claims for recommend- recommended payment in the amount of nine thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and sixteen cents.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the indigent claims for tw- April twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second, Mr. Chair.
So, a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Salas, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, if I can have a motion to adjourn as the Grant County Health Care Claims Board and recommit as a Grant County Board of Commissioners?
So, move.
Second, Mr. Chair.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Salas, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Commissioner Billings, do you have any commission report?
Yeah, just for clarification purposes, unless I was asleep and not paying attention, um, maybe for your benefit, Marialice, or and the public, um, item S, the bid for the bulk diesel fuel went to Fuel Center Plus, is that correct? Um, other than that, I have a question that I should have asked somebody, uh, given somebody some heads up, but, um, the Veterans Services ban, does anybody know about the money for that? Where it's at and how long that'll take?
I don't know.
That hasn't been, that was on this recent, uh, special on, with all the other junior bill monies, right?
Special session?
It, it, yeah, and it does say it's to Grant County, but we haven't received, we usually do the capital outlay questionnaires, we haven't received them for the, the new projects yet, correct? For the junior bill.
Right. Do we do them for that?
Uh, Jason Levine, uh, reached out to me and asked if that money was allocated to the county, um, and as of, as of this moment, I haven't received a notification that we received that allocation. Uh, whether junior money or capital, I don't know, it's, I don't think it's capital.
It's not capital, I'm sorry, it, it's junior money.
So, how, what, what's that process, usually you just wait to hear from them?
So, if it's a, if it's a junior bill, um, that, that's coming from the, the legislature, um, we just pretty much get an email notification from either the State Board of Finance or Department of Finance Administration. They send us an email with whoever, uh, was the last contact that they had on file for, for these appropriations. Typically, it might come to myself, if not, if they have, uh, the county manager's information, it might get emailed to the county manager. Uh, and then from there, we either, um, discuss if we're going to accept the funding, right? It's been allocated to us, but the board will still technically have to accept those funds based off of the dollar amount of the allocation, it's either brought to the board for acceptance, or if it's under twenty thousand, county manager has authorization to accept that money based off of your guys' resolution. Um, so that's the, the process. So, for this one in particular, if it is allocated to the county, and it's my recollection that it's eighty-five thousand, that would have to be placed on to the agenda for your guys' acceptance of that allocation.
And how long does that typically take from, or is there any typical time?
Um, this one's a little bit tricky because at, at first, the, the governor, um, I believe she detailed all of the junior, the junior monies, um, and there was a special session that was called, and they reallocated it essentially. So, it's, it takes a little bit longer, but typically, it, it filters through with the rest of the allocate, the, uh, capital appropriations, so we should have something probably maybe by August, I would, I would assume.
Oh, wow, okay. Okay, so, I'm glad to know that Jason's been in touch with you, because I saw him out at the ballgame the other day, any?
Yeah, I got a, I got an email from him yesterday asking, because they, I guess they're in Limbo too, didn't know where this allocation was, or whose lap it's landing in, or, or anything like that. But as of right now, I haven't received a notification.
Okay, very good, and I have a question of the commission, maybe, uh, Commissioner Edwards, um, the, um, Tony, uh, CEO of the hospital, mentioned an event on the nineteenth of May with USDA. It, can you tell us more about that?
So, um, some, some pretty high-up folks from, uh, USDA want to actually formalize the presentation of funds that they've given the hospital by coming here and in person, and in-person presenting them.
Okay, that's what I thought it was, huh? And that's the nineteenth at two P M?
Yes.
In the, under the canopy, at the front of the hospital, okay.
Under the canopy, yeah, and, um, this is a, you know, a relatively rare occurrence for them to come, uh, in person and do this, so I think it would be really great if we could all attend. So, we would need a
Quorum notice.
Quorum notice, please, for Thursday, the nineteenth at two P M.
Great, thanks, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Did you have something on that, Commissioner Salas?
No, no, to answer my question.
Okay. Commissioner Salas, do you have a report?
I, I, I have a few comments, you know, I, I, sometimes I think that we here at Grant County feel that we're immune to fire control. Uh, but I know for just pull it. I know for a fact that there are areas in a county that would be, uh, could be affected greatly by a fire. You know, there's different areas, maybe not all, but there's different areas, so it could impact us. I was seeing the news this morning where a quick fire in California destroyed twenty homes in a very short time, so, you know, I, I really think that we need to keep this that it, that it's very important that we look at this, especially when we look at our, our ordinance for, uh, fireworks, okay? The other thing I wanted to say about mental health is, many times we think that mental health is just regulated, uh, to, uh, you know, abuse of, of drugs and alcohol, but it goes far beyond that. I would mention, I would really probably be accurate in saying that most families are impacted in some way due to a mental health issue, including my own. So, it's, it's, uh, a very real, and I just wish that dealing with mental health didn't have to do so much with the financial part, you know? It's, it's not as lucrative to treat mental health as it is to treat other illnesses, so to say, is money makes the world go round and mental health just doesn't bring in the bucks to be able to deal with it, so. It's, it's, it's very important. The other thing I wanted to say is, you know, we're coming up on, on elections, and I wanted to encourage all our constituents to go out and exercise their rights, go ahead and vote, okay? Pick the candidate you want and vote, make sure that your voice is heard. And in ending, I wanted to talk about Empire's Inc. As generations go by, I don't think that the impact of what happened in the fifties is recognized as what it means to us today. The impact continues to go on, you know, what they have now is, is a result of what happened in the fifties. And that's why Grant County is called the, the birthplace of unionism. And I feel strongly that, that we need to keep that in the forefront and remember it, accept it, and make sure that we recognize the efforts and the sacrifices that, that our fathers and grandfathers made at that time. So, it's, uh, it's great that we're going to acknowledge this and, and keep it in our memories, keep it fresh, so, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Salas, Commissioner Edwards?
So, I want to follow up on, uh, a couple of things that, uh, Commissioner Salas mentioned, um, and just add to, um, what he's talking about, about how mental health affects families and, um, uh, it not all being about alcohol and substance use disorder, et cetera. Um, it is, uh, becoming very, very obvious that the pandemic has greatly affected and increased um, the fragility of a lot of people's mental health, and that includes our children. Kids, uh, in our schools are really, really, um, challenged by the last couple of years in the pandemic, they're having a very hard time adjusting. Uh, they haven't learned a lot of very basic, uh, things that they would have learned in the school environment, and, um, uh, they are going to be very challenged, uh, this is not going to be over for a long time, and I think as a community, um, we really need to think about, um, mental health in those terms as well. And I think, I'm going to sort of rephrase what, um, uh, Commissioner Salas said, you know, we have to, uh, we have to be aware of the full gamut of what mental health really means, and, um, and we have got to include, um, thinking about kids in that. And then, uh, uh, Commissioner Salas is kids in that. And then, uh, Commissioner Salas is absolutely correct, um, about the fact that for a very, very long time, um, mental health, uh, just hasn't been addressed in terms of basic reimbursement for services. Um, and that is the reason why it is very difficult, um, to fund, uh, and to, to provide, uh, mental health services is because the reimbursement rates for services are much less than they are for other, um, avenues of healthcare. And, um, one of the ways that could change, um, is there's a federal program that designates, uh, what they call CCBHCs, and, um, they are Community Behavioral Health Clinics. And, um, it's, uh, uh, the, the state has to, um, uh, become designated as a CCBHC state, and, uh, New Mexico has committed, um, to doing that. And, uh, that should be, there's a lot, it's a process, uh, in actuality, very similar to critical access, um, in hospitals, uh, whereby, you know, there's a lot of requirements and that sort of thing before you can be designated. But once you are designated, a CCBHC state, uh, then providers, um, can do what they need to do in order to be reimbursed for mental health services, um, at a much better rate. So that is coming. And then, uh, finally, um, I just, I also want to say something about the Empire's Inc., uh, uh, mine strike and rededication. Um, not too long after I moved here, uh, I was very fortunate to take on a portrait project of the surviving women from the Empire's Inc. Mine Strike, and I got to meet, uh, six of the women that had, um, uh, walked the picket line. And, um, part of the reason why I got involved in that project is because, um, I felt like the story of what the women had done, uh, was not being told enough. Um, uh, I highly value everything that has been done to remember, uh, the Empire's Inc. Mine Strike while at the same time, um, don't believe that the women's voices have been heard enough. And a lot of the material that I created out of that is going to be published in an upcoming book, uh, being written by a U N M professor named, uh, Dr. Michelle Kells, and so, uh, that information will be more widely available to the public. But the, the stories that those women tell are something that we can never forget, um, because it was highly unusual and unlikely for them to step up to the plate. Uh, it was culturally not, uh, accepted for, um, for many of those women to do what they did, and, uh, it completely, uh, changed the trajectory of the strike, uh, of the end results, and, um, and in the long term, uh, as Commissioner Salas said, uh, Grant County being the, um, uh, center of unionism. So I just want to acknowledge that and really encourage people, um, if you can't go to the dedication on Saturday, then make it a point to go out there at some point and, uh, remember the, um, incredible, um, gift that the women who stepped up to that, uh, gave to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I want to mention a couple of positive things and, and a concern. First positive thing, uh, was how well I thought Give Grandly went, uh, last weekend. Uh, I was staffing a booth for a couple hours during the event, uh, off of Bullard, the ma, uh, what used to be the farmer's market and is now the maker's market. Uh, and it went really smoothly. It was very inspiring. There were so many groups there represented and lots of people, uh, checking them out, and, and there's just a lot going on in this town. And every time I go to an event like that, uh, I remember how, how much is going on here and how many people we have who care, uh, about making it better through, uh, the work of nonprofits, not just the work of government. Um, so that was, that was an inspiring day. Uh, a second positive thing was how well the tour of the Hila went. Uh, I had the opportunity this year to be the person responsible for handing out checks to the amateurs, uh, which sounds somewhat contradictory, but in fact, there are several thousand dollars go to the amateur riders, uh, in all the different categories. And, uh, it, it was awesome to sit there and, just, riders were in line waiting to get their prize money, uh, and everybody was in a good mood, and I heard many, many compliments of how, how the race went and about this area and how welcoming, uh, people found it and what a great place it was to, to ride. Uh, so that, that made me feel, feel great also. Uh, it really is a showcase, uh, for this area. Um, and the concern I have is, uh, it's something we've mentioned before a few times, uh, and it's the lack of housing, uh, in, I think the county as a whole. Uh, and I think a number of us have wondered, well, what can we do? Uh, you know, I really don't think this is a case where property taxes are causing problems because we have low property taxes. Uh, I don't think it's a place where, uh, bureaucratic restrictions are causing problems because we don't have that many restrictions on how and what gets built. Uh, however, we do have a lack of, uh, construction inspector, and this strikes me as one area where the county maybe could do something that would help facilitate, uh, more construction of housing. Um, we could, I think, pretty easily get together with the town of Silver City and possibly other counties and municipalities in southwestern New Mexico, uh, to hire an inspector who meets, uh, the new, more stringent requirements of the state. Uh, Randy, I, I don't know if that's something, I'm looking at Randy, he has something that you would consider looking into as interim, or, you know, we wait for our county manager, uh, to be back to, to look into that, or, or Priscilla. Um, I talked to Alex Brown about it. He seems very open to, uh, working with us. Uh, the city itself couldn't sustain one. Um, as a result, I think everybody probably familiar with the fact that you have to wait for CID to arrive from Las Cruces, and that's a difficult schedule to get on, and sometimes it's, it can be more than a month.
Months.
So that's one thing that we could, that we could look at. Um, I don't know if this is a county issue or not, but the other issue that keeps coming up in my discussions is , uh, the proliferation of Airbnb, uh, properties within Silver City. Um, there are houses, including two, within sight of my front porch that have recently been sold to people who are develop, developing them specifically to be Airbnb properties. Uh, obviously, people have the right to do that with their properties, uh, but it does deprive our neighborhood of permanent residence. Um, I know the city of Atlanta has recently adopted, uh, an ordinance there limiting, uh, such properties to two per person, so that you can't have a whole string of Airbnbs. Uh, San Francisco's had an ordinance similar to that for a long time because it's a huge problem there. Uh, again, I don't know if this is a county issue. Uh, so maybe I'm just asking for feedback from anybody who hears. If, if this is an issue outside of municipalities in Grant County, then it's something I guess I would want us to look into, uh, as a way to keep a housing here affordable for people from here, working here. Uh, that's, that's, that's an issue that I think is within our jurisdiction. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Just to let you know a little bit, um, I have had conversations with Priscilla Lucero concerning housing. She has some great ideas and possible resources, and, you know, in the conversations we have had, I have not engaged, I don't remember, I don't think I have engaged the county in, in any of that. But, uh, to, you know, I'm just letting you know, you might reach out to her and, and have our, our, uh, Mr. Villa there maybe reach out, and you guys can, can sit down with her and, and listen to what, what she told me and maybe ideas and, and maybe grant funding or monies out there for stuff like that.
Thank you.
Well, maybe she could come and tell us all.
That would be even better.
Yeah. So, um, I just, I want to follow up on, um, Mr. Brown's comments about Airbnbs. I do think it's a county issue. Um, it may not be a density issue in the same way it is, you know, looking out from Mr. Brown's porch. Um, but it's definitely an issue. Um, it's a nationwide issue. Um, low, uh, you know, affordable housing is being purchased nationwide for, specifically for Airbnbs. And, uh, Priscilla, I would encourage you to stick that in the, we got to talk about this in the comp plan bucket.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, may I follow up on one, Commissioner Brown's comments?
Yeah, yeah, hold on, and, and, maybe then you guys can let me do my comments, but we'll see. Um, you, you know, one thing, and, and I never thought of, of, of that Airbnb. I would like to know, I know there's a few houses within the town limits, and I don't know if it can be done. I don't know if they have to have business licenses or anything, but if we could get somehow, maybe through Realtors or any number of how many houses we have designated for that, that would help me a lot is to deciding, you know, what kind of, is it growing? Is it not? Is not so bad? Maybe we have four or five houses. I don't know. But I, I don't know how we would get those stats.
You could just look on Airbnb?
Well, and, and I think the town has done some of that. I know some of the town councilors have raised this issue.
Because they're very concerned. They're very concerned.
I don't know if we can get numbers, but...
It's also a lodger's tax issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, lodger's tax.
Yeah, that's it. Commissioner Billings?
I was gonna bring up the lodger's tax issue and wonder if they're paying lodger's tax, so.
Most of them, many of them are not.
Yeah. So, um, I appreciate you bringing up the construction industries problem. I'm probably not as familiar as some of the contractors are with that, but boy, I have some stories that are incredible. It, it can delay construction for months, and it can also discourage construction because you've been through that once, you're not going through it again. And when, when you have a contractor who's trying to run a crew and he has to spend, go down the Cruces every, like, twice a week sometimes and, and then can't get them to come up here, it, it can delay months, and it's just, I, I think you've, uh, really hit on an idea if we could team with the town of Silver City with the idea that we're not, this, the inspectors aren't there to stop construction. They're here, they're there to aid people through the process and get it done, get it done right, and so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now I forgot half of what I was gonna say.
We'll get out of here soon.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I just want to, you know, first of all, on the Empire's Inc. strike, just thank everybody that, that had, uh, a hand in putting that together. You know, we often hear in, in, uh, you know, comments like, don't forget where you come from and, and our culture and, and things like that. Well, I think, in my opinion, that's, that's one of the big items, but I want to thank everyone there for, uh, for putting that together. Um, the other thing I wanted to comment on is, is, uh, I really appreciate, uh, Commissioner Edwards there. Um, you know, as commissioners, we get caught up in certain daily activities, not only personal, but, you know, commissioner stuff, and we forget a lot of these things, and it's good to have a team that do remember things like the proclamation on the National School Lunch Heroes, Mental Health Proclamation, Nurse Proclamation. So I really want to thank you because they do deserve the, uh, they do deserve proclamations and, and to be recognized and, and, you know, team that we are up here, we appreciate you doing that. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, the other part to this on, on my part is, um, you know what I noticed today, and I want to thank county staff, I don't know if it was Adam or Ben or, or who it was, but I appreciate the screens that were put out there for the audience. I saw a lot of the audience looking at them. They were able to see what was being presented on the screens. So, um, thank you for that. It, it's, it, it really felt good to see these people really looking at it, engaging in, in the meeting and, and seeing what we're seeing. So I, I thank you guys for that. Uh, the other part, just remember, here at the end of the month, we do have a budget meeting. Please bring a sack lunch because I have a feeling that it's gonna be a while that, uh, where we discuss some of this stuff. So, and I thank you, Commissioner.
Tell me when that meeting, what, sorry?
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I did say the date because I didn't remember the date. Twenty-fourth? It's on the twenty-fourth, so that might be a little, a lot of discussion. So let's see how that goes. Um, anyway, thank you.
We also have a meeting the nineteenth.
Yes, we do have a meeting the nineteenth, Thursday. That's coming up. Um...
Nine o'clock, right?
Nine o'clock AM, nineteenth. And I believe Kevin already did the, the agenda and so forth. Right.
Twenty-fourth is at nine also?
Twenty-fourth is at nine and nineteenth is at nine.
So just not to pile it on, but we'll also have a hospital executive session on the twenty-fourth. So might bring your sack lunch and your sack dinner.
So moving on to, uh, is that it, Commissioners?
Yes.
Is that all for your report? Okay, moving on to the next item is, uh, executive session in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one, H two. Under that, be limited personnel matters regarding county manager's office. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Deputy Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Fonce, Commissioner Salas, and Commissioner Billings, are you all aware you're entering into executive session?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
And we are unlikely to make any decisions, correct?
It'd probably be no action taken, not, not today. Thank you.